I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is April twenty-third. I'm sorry, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. And we are here tonight to hear from Mayor John Hamilton to begin a community discussion on possible uses of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. In order to keep record, will the clerk please call the role on council members that are present?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Rosenbarger. Okay, Scambalory.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
P. Mount Smith.
Here.
Smith. Okay, Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you.
I am here.
I'm sorry, who was that?
It's right, it's right, it's Councilmember Smith. Sorry about that, tuned in late, so sorry.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Hope you weren't held up by one of your colleagues. No, I know, I get it. Okay, thank you, we have at least eight of council member here today, so I will now turn the floor over to Mayor John Hamilton.
Unmute, can you hear me all right? Hello, everyone, thank you. So I will make a few brief comments to start. I'm going to hand it over quickly to Deputy Mayor Don Griffin, day two, to just say hello, I hope he's here too. And then Jeff Underwood, Controller, for brief comments. But mostly, we also want to hear ideas from you. We are following the lead of one of my colleagues here that I was given two ears and one mouth. I'm going to try to use my ears more than my mouth today. And but let's, let me just frame this if I can, and thank you for giving us the time this evening. So, as you know, the city of Bloomington is expecting to receive a little north of twenty-two million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act. That, we are still awaiting regulations and some of the details for that, reporting requirements, restrictions, et cetera. We have some sense of that, but we do not think we want to wait to begin the discussion about how this one-time money could be invested. Now, I want to give credit where credit is due. It's important to recognize the leadership of President Joe Biden, the House of Representatives and the Senate, Congress, which passed this extraordinary and, from my perspective, unprecedented rescue plan that moves money directly to local governments. Besides the twenty-two million that we expect, our county government, Monroe County Government, we expect to receive twenty-nine million dollars. That fifty million dollars is an extraordinary, one-time opportunity for us to help our community recover, rescue, move forward correctly as well as we can in the months and years ahead. In addition, the state received about three billion dollars under this same act. So these are, these are unprecedented levels and opportunities at the local government to help do the right thing. And so what I mostly want to do tonight is hear from you, your ideas about what you think we can and should do this, how we should approach it, at whatever level of specificity or generality that you want to do. We do view this as just an extraordinary opportunity, and it will be a long dialogue that we're in and kind of beginning in a formal way tonight. We shared with you last week one approach that identified four key buckets, if you will, or categories of potential investment. And we gave some, some kind of examples of the kinds of programs or projects that might make the most sense at an early, just as illustrative, I guess, really illustrative ideas about this. But I want to be clear that this is the start of a wide-open discussion about what we ought to do. We look forward to sharing that with the county. I understand the county councils meeting tonight as well, contemporaneously, really, to start that discussion, and with the state as well. We do expect to bring one appropriation ordinance yet this year, probably, to talk about investing and activating some of this money this calendar year, certainly part of the two thousand and twenty-two budget prop, process, which will begin formally with you in hearings in August, of course, preparing for those, and then your ultimate action, and probably also into, into the year two thousand and twenty-three as well for, for the use of some of this money. They'll probably not be on that, from my perspective. So the four buckets that we identified were essentially, number one, city revenue replacement. Where have we taken hits and losses in city government in our revenue in ways that will hamper our ability to provide basic city services in the years ahead? A second bucket, housing insecurity, from, from people experiencing homelessness to, to folks higher income who experience housing insecurity. What are steps we can take with this funding to improve the lives of our people, who are, many of whom are really experiencing tough times? A third bucket is, is thinking about economic recovery and jobs and how we help our, the engine of our community, the, the jobs and, and employers and employees all recover forward into the future. And then a fourth bucket, thinking about public infrastructure. What are, what are some investments we might make that will benefit the public in long-term infrastructure investments? And again, let me just say, these are, these are four proposed buckets as a way to structure our thinking about this. Again, we gave some illustrative examples. I want to, I'll, I'll close by noting that within all of those buckets, and as we indicated in a memo last week, I like to think about filtering or, or reviewing or grading potential ideas with two big filters or, or criteria, one being equity and inclusion. How will this investment or this, this program or this project, how will it help improve our community's inclusion and equity in the years ahead? As, as one filter. A second filter is sustainability. How will a project or a program or an investment help us become a more sustainable community, specifically moving us toward our climate action goals and more generally, a more sustainable community? Other filters or, or criteria might include things like, how much will our investment of this ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act money, leverage other resources, private or public? Another filter might be, are there alternatives that can support this program or project in the short or long term? Other, other filters might be, what will the transition be like when this money ends with the project or the program that we're, that we're considering in this? So, and, and we welcome other ideas to approach that. So I won't, I don't want to talk more about it. I'll hand it over to Don Griffin in just a moment, but just, I'll just remind us, this is one-time money. It's an extraordinary opportunity for potentially transformational investments. We look forward to hearing your ideas tonight and in the weeks and months ahead. But I do hope we keep in mind the sense that through what we've been together, this is a, this is a chance to pivot and recover forward and move into, into a new, a new way, a new community. So on day two of his tenure of Deputy Mayor, Don Griffin, I just want to hand the microphone figuratively over to you to say hello. This may be your first formal activity, I guess, in front of council, among many to come, to be sure. But Don, we're so pleased to have you on board. And I'll hand it over to you.
I am pleased to be here, I'm not going to take too long. I had my second shot yesterday, and man, not saying don't get it, you gotta get it, but it's, it's, it's got me a little bit. So if I sound, sound a little wonky, let's blame the medication, okay? This is such a great opportunity. And, you know, we're here to listen to your ideas. I mean, we, we've tried to frame suggestions or tried to make it easier from the over almost a hundred million dollars requests and ideas that we've had. But this is your opportunity to take, to, to, to help move Bloomington in to that next chapter. So with that, I'm going to leave you alone and just listen and learn. And I welcome, and hopefully you welcome me to the team as well. Okay?
Will, thank, thank you, Don. We'll hand it to Jeff Underwood, if that's okay, Mr. President, to give a little fiscal overview to frame this, and then we'll, I think, hand it back to you in hopes that you can kind of share ideas as a group, as individuals, as we go forward, or answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Good evening, can everyone hear me okay? All right. As the mayor said, we haven't gotten a lot of guidance on, on this fund yet. We will, as a part of the appropriation ordinance, when we come to you all, will also include the creation of the fund itself and its uses. Our understanding so far is that they're trying to leave it as open as possible. One of the major differences between this funding and the, the prior recovery funds that we've received is this can be used to supplement lost revenues. And I think that's an important feature, especially as your controller, that you'll see that we, we will probably ask to recover some of the lost funds that I'm going to talk about. The other thing that we do know for sure is, right now, they're saying the funds have to be expended by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. So as the mayor said, we're kind of looking at this over a twenty-four month period, so kind of six months this year, twelve months next year, and then six months after that. So it'll, it'll cover two budget requests plus some additional appropriation ordinance. As you can imagine, last year was a tough year for the city in some ways, in some ways it was better. The good news is our property tax collections actually came in a little bit higher than what was projected, and that certainly was welcomed. Our lit obviously came in at what it was projected to be. We're always guaranteed one year of that, so that's the good news. We have not gotten any news on property taxes or assessed value where that may end up. Obviously, some segments continued to build, others, you know, did not. So we'll be interested to see where that ends up, both from. Where our levy goes, again, that's a seven-year rolling average of statewide non-farm wages. And what we have seen, and this will roll us into the lid a little bit, is that some segments have done extremely well as far as employment, deliveries and, and those kinds of things, and those businesses that retooled to be able to stay in business during this pandemic. Other segments, you know, devastated. So a lot of service areas have not done well. So we'll be interested to see how that ends up. The indication right now for lit for next year is that will probably be flat and with a plus or minus five percent on that as well. It's, right now, indications are, it may be towards the plus side, which will be good. That said, in looking at, this will be the first, the second year that we've not gonna, we're not going to come back to you all for reversions requests. We were down about five hundred thousand dollars net in the city's general fund. So we still have adequate reserves. We were able, obviously, to take care of that. Some of the departments that were hit hard are the ones that we talked to you during the budget period. Parks and Rec continues to see a significant decrease in their revenue stream. Now, the good news is, they obviously will be down in expenses, but a lot of those programs are profitable, and they subsidize those programs that are not. So anytime that we lose that net, we, we lose funds. So what we've seen is in their non-reverting fund was significant drop in that balance, while in the general fund, they did a great job of trying to hold down expenses and property taxes were a little bit higher. So net, they were still down for the year. And that, you can see, that was one of the areas that we talked about, recouping some of those revenues for them so that we can, we can keep them home. The street department is gas tax. People have not been traveling, so to speak. And so it's down significantly. And just as a reminder, we supplemented from the general fund about a million dollars to keep the street department in a positive balance. They cut expenses as much as they could, but, you know, it's a service department that plows the streets, that maintains the streets, they maintain the sidewalks. So they, they do a lot of great things there as well. Obviously, parking revenues in both the parking garages and parking meters are down. The good news is, the, the parking meter had a fairly substantial balance in it, so we're able to take care of that. Whereas with the garages, there's not a lot, and we're trying to keep those maintained as much as possible. So, you know, it's going to be a flat to a negative year again. The city is well-positioned to continue to do those things to drive the economy forward. We won't see a significant increase, I think, other than planned increases. And, you know, we've got three unions that have contracts that will be, you know, we'll have to give the raises that are there, plus our, our civil city employees as well, and then just the normal increases in utilities and insurance and those kind of things. One of the things we have seen a significant increase in is materials, especially building-type materials. If any of you have been to Lowe's or Renard's or Black Lumber or some of those places, you've seen four to five hundred percent increases in pricing. So we, you know, we've experienced that as well. So departments continue to minimize expenses as much as possible, but still deliver the program. So kudos to all my fellow department heads that have done a wonderful job. I'm not the most popular person in the world with them over the last year, not that I was before, but even more so because I keep saying, please, please, keep spending down. So that's kind of the fifty-thousand-foot view, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Hamilton, Deputy Mayor Griffin, and City Controller Underwood. It is my understanding, and city staff can correct me, I'm sorry, council staff can correct me if I'm wrong, this, this evening will not have public comment or public questions. But if you three are available, we should and may have questions from our, my council colleagues. And in that vein, if I may start the questions, and just kind of put up your hands, and I'll try to view and get to them as we go along. But to get this started, first I do want to say that this evening begins the community public discussion on possible uses of ARPA funding. I'm encouraged at least to start on the buckets and some of the potential uses, in particularly in housing, security, and other areas. But I'm sure we'll have more robust discussions moving forward as we proceed. The first question that I have, and then we'll go to colleagues. And I don't know if you have any answer, and I don't really know who this is directed to, but has the city identified any other potential sources of some of the state's money? The state got what, three billion dollars? So are we aware that they have any matching fund or matching funds to match our funds to help with what we need? Or is there any other uses or allocation from the state that we know of or might can expect moving forward?
Well, let me mention a couple things, and then welcome, if others want to comment, Deputy Mayor, Controller, I think our corporate counsel may be on this as well. Two things, one, I am directly working quite actively right now with the state to identify some potential matching support, supplemental support around housing insecurity, and in particular around people experiencing homelessness. The state, of course, is very early in the process as well as we are, but they did get a very significant three-billion-dollar allocation from the rescue plan. So I know we're going to be talking to the state about potential match and partnerships around that lowest-income housing insecurity, people experiencing homelessness. We also have some additional appropriations directly to the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department through the federal Housing and Urban Development Department that may support more of that. I do think it's, it's a really important question to identify where we might leverage our money or replace our money with other sources, CARES Act money, the, the earlier money. I also want us to work closely with the county to identify areas where there might be mutual interest, whether in housing or public infrastructure and such. So that's one general response. The second point I'd make is simply that we also know there's very significant energy in, in the federal government about infrastructure, potential new infrastructure package, which could itself include support that could support some of the projects and programs that we're interested in here as well. So I think it's, that's not a very specific answer, but we are going to be watching that as closely as we can. If any of my colleagues want to add to that, please jump in as you, as you wish. Or not.
Okay, seeing no one jumping in. And I think many of us realize that this is, it's early in the game, and there may not be some definitive answers. But it's worth bringing to the forefront and sharing with whatever we have. With regard to my colleagues, I think the best way to do is I'll just start up in the corner, and we'll go through each person. When we get to you, if you don't have a question, just say you don't have any, and then we'll move to the next. That seems to be the most efficient, I hope that's okay. And having said that, we'll start with Councilmember Rallo.
Well, I had a question just for Jeff Underwood about our discretion on, in this, in this money, and whether we could bank it, or at least a portion of it, anticipating that, you know, there may be another downturn. We may need to tap more reserves in the future. Is this a concern, something we should, do you consider doing?
They, one of the things that they did say is we can't necessarily build up reserves from that standpoint. They want the money spent. What we can do is, because we've got some time in order to spend the money,
All right.
is we can recover, you know, lost, we can continue to monitor lost revenues, which would keep us from dipping, having to dip into reserves.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll pass the baton.
I'm sorry, unmute myself. Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. And one thing I think I heard earlier is that these funds must be spent by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. So I'll just remind that. Moving on, Councilmember Scambalory.
Before she jumps in, I will say, Corporations Council reminded me that they've already pushed that out, so that we're actually, they've pushed the deadline out to twelve thirty-one twenty-four, so it gives us a little bit more leeway there. So they initially had said twenty-three, and now they've pushed it out to twenty-four.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may we, are you wanting to focus on questions right now, or maybe comment as well, or both, or?
Both, from council colleagues, yes.
Okay. Yeah, comment first, Mayor Hamilton and, and colleagues. I very much appreciate what you said about leveraging other funds. I'm a fundraiser, so when we could turn one dollar into three, that seems like a good opportunity worth exploring. I just wonder particularly around areas of homelessness and housing insecurity. We've talked about those issues as being regional issues, so I'm wondering if there are opportunities with nearby towns. You know, might we have an opportunity to talk with Columbus or talk with other cities in the area? So I would just put that out there. It's probably too early to respond to that, but I would just be interested in your take on that.
Well, I can give a quick response to that. I totally agree. Housing and security generally, homelessness in particular, are definitely regional issues. They're really statewide, they're ultimately national issues that, that, that can cross all kinds of borders. I have already reached out, and there are seven other cities that have joined a letter asking for dialogue with the state government about matching for programs that we would do to increase our work on homelessness. As you know, there's a very strong regional effort being led by Tina Peterson at the Community Foundation and Frot Fefferman at the United Way to explore housing insecurity at a regional level and to identify solutions to that, frankly, to, to identify responses to that. And I think that is really important. I do hope that the funding can, can be similar, that, that, you know, regional funders and partners can, can join in if we identify some steps to be taken, and also at the state level. So I totally agree with that. I think, you know, I, I'm going to probably be urging that we look at putting some of our ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act money, ARPA, on the table for, for various projects and seeing if we can attract others to, to join in with that.
Great, that's helpful. And ditto, I think, that our county colleagues as well. And I'm sure they have their own goals for, for how they'll spend this money. But again, big fan of partnerships and leveraging. I think this is a question for Mr. Underwood, but I'm not sure. I, I've been in general conversations about departments that have especially experienced revenue loss in the last year. I know, for example, we've talked a lot about parks. Is, is there a summary of that information somewhere? Or could one be produced? Or, because I'm sure multiple departments have been impacted. I'm just not, I, I, I don't feel like I have a very good handle on that, so.
Yes, we can, we can get that for you. We've got it. I, I'll, our annual report is available on, on our website, as well as Gateway, so that's got all the financial transactions. But I'll summarize, I could send a summary of that to you on the major operating funds.
That would be helpful, thank you. And I'll, I'll pass on to the next person.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambalory. Councilmember Sandberg. And then Councilmember Flaherty will be after that.
Thank you. And with respect to partnerships, my question has to do with, obviously, housing. I think that's a major focus that we all need to take a look at with respect to our constituents. And I'm wondering if, similar to what I U P U I is doing with Indianapolis, if we can partner better with Indiana University. Now, I don't know if IU is going to be a beneficiary of any of this ARP funding, or if the state, in its wisdom, will help improve the funding formulas for our state universities. But if we could partner with IU on a similar program that I U P U I is doing to help house their employees. I mean, Indiana University employees and staff who are not in the upper echelons are very moderate in their salaries. And I'm sure some staff and professors are interested in finding housing that is near Indiana University. And I'm hoping that we can be a little creative with any kind of partnership, again, with our, one of our largest employers in the middle of our city. I don't know if that's possible or not, but with respect to that as well, we have some turnover in our departments here. I see that Director John Zodi is on the call here. And I would have questions for the Hand Department in helping give us an accountability of where the Housing Development Fund stands right now, and a fairly thorough reporting of where some of that money has gone with respect to adding to our affordable housing stock here in the community. And could that possibly be another source for our buckets to make sure that Housing Development Fund is good and strong and healthy and more capable of providing the subsidies that we all know are necessary to get to affordability? And that is not only incentives for people who are building housing, but also the subsidies for low-to-moderate-income people in our community. And we know that Bloomington wages are not keeping pace with the cost of living to make sure that individuals in our community have the subsidies they need to afford the rising rental costs and the rising housing costs in our community. So I think Hand is going to play a big part with respect to our constituent-focused uses of these, of these incredibly wonderful dollars that we're going to get, and hopefully we'll spend wisely. I mean, housing for me, obviously, is a big piece. Our nonprofits are stressed to their capacity with the pandemic. And, and I have to say a word for the art sector because the performing arts are going to be one of the last to recover from being able to get back on top of their game, get back into attracting audiences and the revenues they need. So I hope we will keep arts, which is a fundamental brand of this city, in, in clear focus. And I know, Mayor Hamilton, you probably, was it today or is it tomorrow, that you're going to get the report from the Waldron Task Force about the, the proper usage of our Waldron Arts Center? So I'll be curious to hear what we'll be developing on that front, too. And of course, it's very, very important that we take good care of our city employees who have been stressed and taxed with managing the affairs of the city during this pandemic. So we want to make sure that the funds are provided for their well-being. The people who serve this city certainly need to be taken care of with replenishment of, of funds that, that are perhaps definitely in the buckets that you've identified here. But yeah, housing for me is going to be the, the primary focus. Make sure that we have the dollars to do that all-important affordability piece because we can't leave it up to the private sector. That's just not, and that's, that's kind of a non-starter with me. So subsidies for both people who need housing and people who are going to help us develop the housing needs to be, I think, in pretty clear focus here. So that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. We'll move on to Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Isabel Piedmont Smith will be next after Councilmember Flaherty.
Okay, you you don't I I was going to respond.
I'm so I'm so sorry. I wasn't looking at you. Go right in.
No, no worries. I I just wanted to mention, first of all, I really appreciate Councilmember Sandberg kind of helping identify priorities from your perspective. That that that's really helpful. We appreciate that articulation. And you absolutely employer housing from the largest employer like IU actually already had some interest from the school corporation thinking about employee housing. We absolutely love to partner to identify ways to do that, both on the rental and the ownership side. And employ all the resources that we can, Housing Development Fund, you know, regulatory authorities that we have, incentives that we have, and then cash that may be coming in with this. So I I think, you know, it's helpful to hear what I heard was talking about that. Housing buckets are really important one from your perspective and to develop the kind of programs that may help in addition to the general nonprofits and arts and city employees. So thank you for sharing those and we'll we're keeping notes of what you what you share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you all for the presentation and welcome Deputy Mayor Griffin. I just have a question for now. I'll save comments for another round or if we can keep going. The question was about transit specifically. Obviously, that's department or sector that that was also hit hard by. I know revenues don't make up a huge portion of them. I'm sorry, ticket sales don't make a huge portion of their budget, but I'm imagining they've had some challenges with the pandemic as well. And I'm wondering if if that's part of the you know, revenue recovery and replacement that we'll be looking at or if there's much need there or if that's already been filled kind of by CARES Act funding or other transit specific dollars that are out there. So just kind of wanted an assessment of of how Bloomington Transit is doing.
Yeah, let me I'll start with that. And if others want to join, I just was with Lou May for an hour or so yesterday. Transit, as you indicate, Councilmember, has been smacked hard. Their, you know, their revenues, their ridership are way down here and across the country. They have gotten very significant and specifically directed financial support from the Transit Agency and the United States Department of Transportation and are in a financially are in a decent shape. We continue to be fair free. I just actually learned yesterday that Bloomington Transit, we believe, is the only continuous fair free place, fair free system in the state still. Many went that way briefly, but we've continued that way. We I unofficially here, I guess, I would say I don't. I think they're going to have their own avenues of support directly toward transit systems generally through the federal government. We certainly believe very strongly in the importance of that system and will keep our ear to the ground on that and over the months ahead. But right now, they've, you know, they've had very strong federal support to keep those transit systems solvent. Their their biggest problem is getting bus drivers. And and they may need to take some steps on that. But it's a great question. We'll continue to monitor it and and keep asking about it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I've been looking forward to having this discussion. And I know it's just the beginning of discussions of how to use these federal funds. So I wanted to. I don't have questions. I wanted to kind of indicate where my priorities would lie. And housing is definitely up there. And since this is money that needs to be spent within a certain period of time, my mind kind of went to the idea of a land trust to purchase land that could then be the location for affordable housing in perpetuity because the city would or some city nonprofit partnership would own the land and and be able to lease it at at very low rates. So I hope that that that's an idea that we could explore further. The the other emphasis I have is is on reducing our carbon footprint. I know Mayor Hamilton, you mentioned that as kind of one of the overall one of the overarching lenses through which you you look at all the expenditures. And so I'm I'm thinking of I was thinking of transit as well. So let's keep an eye on on the other federal resources for that. Also, you know, if we can help people on the lower income levels to solarize. We've been doing the, you know, the bulk buying, which is great, but that still leaves a hefty price tag for a lot of people. So some kind of grants for going solar or and or for weatherization of older homes to increase energy efficiency. I think that would be a prudent use of funds as well. So that those are just some of the things that I'm I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. You need unmute, Mayor.
I'm I appreciate it. I'm taking notes. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Volan.
Interesting discussion so far. First, I want to echo pretty much everything Councilmember Sandberg said. I'll work backwards from what she said. Definitely want to see performing arts who sustain the greatest losses supported somehow with ARP funds. I heartily agree with her idea that the university should be thinking about building housing for nonstudents, clerical staff in particular, and doesn't even have to be subsidized. The 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 key would be that they start rethinking the whole nature of campus. Maybe it doesn't have to be a nine month a year place. Maybe it can be a 12 month a year place where people live year round, starting with staff who otherwise they can't pay very well. If that same staff doesn't have to maintain a car to go to work, if they can take advantage of the adequate bus system that IU itself has, that's a big win for so many of us for, I mean, it will pay dividends throughout the community. It's a very good idea that I want to endorse, but with that addition that IU should be thinking about building, I mean, nice housing on campus for people who would live there 12 months a year. I want to add, also, I want to agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith's idea of the land trust. That's an idea that's a long time in coming. We should be able to put a substantial amount of money down to acquire land that, I mean, if if the debate over zoning is any indication, there is a crying need for some kind of agency with a fund that could acquire a property that we might like to see become you know, kind of a housing that's better for the community as a whole and not just go to more private market rate conversions. But I also want to very strongly emphasize housing for the the lowest end. You know, I've been a fan of an article I read 30 years ago about a couple of Georgia Tech students who went up to homeless people and asked them, what do you need? And they said, I just want a place to put my things and I want a place to lie down and I want a little bit of light. I want to wash my face. I want to stay warm. And they built them six by eight foot shacks that provided them the privacy that any human being deserves. The problem was that the city wouldn't allow those buildings to stay erected wherever they were. We have to identify a place where we can build such things. We can do that. We could. We could do better than shelter for most, if not all, of the people experiencing homelessness. You know, with this money this year. So like, I just can't emphasize that enough. We have to go beyond shelter. And if we were to build such a project, it would pay dividends in the community because it would allow some people to get off the street and to, I mean, you can't do anything without housing first. You can't if you don't have an address, if you can't get clean, if you can't have peace of mind, you can't fight your addictions or your mental health problems. So this is something we can do and it's a facility that if we build it can, you know, will provide a continuum, is it like fills in holes in our continuum of housing that I think we're always we're always going to have need for, even as people move through that that place. But we have to identify a place for it that's almost as important as how we would fund it. But it would be built with materials you can get from Lowe's, you know, $100, $1,000, just anything to get people out of a tent, off the street, someplace where they can have at least a shred of dignity. So that's a high priority for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Sims, and for the presentation, I want to ask Mr. Underwood a question and then I have some ideas. Mr. Underwood, how much of the funds that we're talking about, 22 million, needs to be used for replacement for government, you know, for things that we've missed out on at the city?
Well, we're putting that together. I know we're we're short. We were short at least a million dollars in the street department and and another million or so in the Parks Department, our IT Department. We spent considerable amount of money trying to beef it back up, both from a security standpoint and getting equipment out so people can work remotely and do it safely. So I'd say another half a million dollars there there. So you're looking at two and a half million dollars for one year. So possibly we could continue to monitor that as well as, you know, what level of reserves. And it can be some mixture in between over that. It just depends on how quickly the economy comes back and and what those are going to be in 21, 22, and 23, because we're always lagging behind. So it's a little hard to see that magic ball right now. So I know right now we're about two and a half million short.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, when I heard about this money coming in to the city and into the county, the first thing I thought of was something as Councilmember Volan talked about, Piedmont Smith and Sandberg. We need to do something big and bold with housing. We need to. We need to help people. We need to make this a statement. So I would propose, let's take $20 million. Let's help people buy homes that are people of lower income levels. Let's help them buy homes. You can buy about two help about 2,000 people buy a home with a grant. We can partner with Indiana Housing Community Development Authority for guidance on how to do this. We can partner with New Hope. We can partner with the banks. We can leverage. This will help people who are generationally poor build wealth, build financial assets that they can pass on to their families. This is a opportunity for us to do something so fantastic and wonderful for so many people. I just, that's what I thought of immediately when I knew we were getting $22 million. And I realized it's a one shot deal, but this is a one shot opportunity to help 2,000 people buy a home and help help them get into a home that they can afford. And I think that a combination of the things Councilmember Volan said and Piedmont Smith and Sandberg, I just think this is the opportunity to make a statement and we can tell people who we are in Bloomington. We help people that need help. We help people who come from diverse backgrounds, social equity. We have the opportunity to do this fantastic program. And I didn't say it was going to be easy, but I that's exactly what hit me when I heard about the American Rescue Fund. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thank you. I just kind of have a little list that I scribbled down, piggybacking on a lot of what other folks have said. Councilmember Piedmont Smith talked about solar for homes. I mean, I would also, you know, like to look into the idea of incentivizing solar for condos and solar for apartment buildings. It's something that is like an intense startup cost, but over the long run, of course, saves the owner's money and also renters' money. So I think that would be great to help decrease like rental prices and, you know, utilities across the board. Of course, the common theme, infrastructure for sidewalks protected by planes and transit. I know we talked a lot about transit already, but I wanted to mention again, something we talked about maybe last year, a park and ride in a downtown shuttle to work on getting employee parking out of the downtown so much and maybe into the hospital garage or something farther out. Composting citywide, I would love to look into that. For homes, for apartments, for the whole thing. With that, also recycling at apartments. I know that right now, right? If you're above five units, it has to be private. So looking at that, a car share program. Maybe this is something that's piloted first with city government, but something to help folks have access to vehicles and maybe not own so many. As we know, it's, you know, five to $8,000 a year for people to own one car. I really love the farm stock idea that's happening and how much money was first put in with the Recover Forward. I think there's always room for more. I'm really into helping folks here who are growing food, get that food distributed locally. So I love that. As Councilmember Volan talked about, permanent housing for people experiencing homelessness. And many council members have mentioned maybe potentially, you know, expanding a home buyer down payment assistance program, something similar to what the police officers are getting. That would also be neat if it was piloted also with potentially, I don't know, city government staff or just like, you know, as a here's something we should do. Also, just an idea, you know, thinking about duplexes coming up in front of council. I think programs and incentives to have developers, you know, small developers in town or whoever is out there condoize small multifamily buildings so that, you know, anything from really it doesn't matter 100 unit buildings down to plexes so that we've got more opportunities for more affordable homes that are just attached instead of detached. I think I don't have all the answers for how that would work. I mean, I've thought about like zero interest for construction loans or some kind of forgivable loans if folks are purchasing and then renovating. Okay, that's my list right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. We'll go another round, I think, with I I found hearing from my colleagues and all these ideas very, very helpful. I do want to add, and we've talked about sustainable or or many projects. I just want to make sure that there will be bold. We will use some of those funds, but I want those funds to be more like seed, if you can, to begin other things like the land trust, like some of the housing issues, but I want them to pay off on into the future. So I want them to be more sustainable for the long term. We've talked a little bit about some of our food insecurity issues, some of our local growers and that sort of thing, but I think that deserves more discussion and maybe some investment as well. And lastly, what I like to offer, many of the things that we talk about will just won't be possible long term until we raise income levels through partnership, maybe with other entities in job creation. And maybe more and a little bit bolder partnerships or collaborations with the idea on creating jobs with higher wages that people could actually live on in Bloomington. So having said that, I think this again just begins a community discussion. I think we can go another round. We will on comments with our council members and I'll start again with Councilmember Rollin.
Thanks. Actually, this is my first round for questions or comments.
Well, actually, but either or, just just.
No, it's fine. It's fine. I I can. I like everything I'm hearing, actually. I I think we've talked a lot in the past about the city basically taking a step to purchase land and and, you know, create create housing, low income housing there. And I think that that's this. This might be our opportunity. I like the down payment idea for home buyers. I think that that's a good way to for people to establish equity, obviously. People are paying rents that could go to mortgage payments. And then regarding food, I think that we've got one of the things on the back burner right now is the incubator farm. And I think that that is something that we should move forward on. That is provide people with farmland that they can't afford for themselves so that they can grow food and, you know, not just for themselves, but for sale. And give them the means to do it, equipment and so forth, water, water source and so forth. So I think an incubator farm, the incubator farm concept is a really good forward step for food security for the community. And then I would just say, John and Don, we, you know, the, the Climate Action Plan is awfully good. And I would just expedite a lot of the things that are in there into carbon reduction. I think the only thing I find lacking is, in that plan, is carbon sequestration. I think that there could be more emphasis on that. I mean, it's generally seen as, as planting trees and planting vegetation, which is good. But I think we should think creatively about carbon sequestration. And I can offer some ideas, but anyway, I like everything I'm hearing, frankly. I think everybody here focusing on housing, focusing on climate, moving ahead with what we're already doing, I think is all very good stuff. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralo. Councilmember Scandlery?
Yes, thank you. This is interesting for me to listen to because it reminds me of a lot of the conversations I have as a fundraiser for IU with donors who have money and departments that can benefit from it. And one thing that happens almost without exception in those conversations is the conversation flips back and forth between really bold transformational ideas, once-in-a-lifetime ideas, and efforts that also keep us from falling behind in very basic functions. The latter is much less sexy, but I think it also has a place in the conversation too. I haven't had a lot of conversations with constituents about this, but of those who have, which is, of those who are aware of it and kind of following the story, maybe a dozen, I've been surprised that every single one of them has talked about infrastructure. I wasn't expecting that. So I think there are ways to look at interesting projects at the intersection of multiple areas. So if, for example, we have residents who are prioritizing infrastructure, is that an opportunity to, as you've suggested, mayor move toward the conversion of streetlights to LED or, or work in these other areas? So if, and I think Councilmember Sandberg maybe mentioned arts as a community. I know there's a parallel conversation going on with multiple arts organizations and the role the Waldron might play. So if we have deferred maintenance area needs in that particular area, in that particular structure, maybe an investment there would support our arts community and promote some jobs and accomplish some other things. So I think that's an interesting, not a tension, but a balancing that needs to happen. So I would just offer that thought is that I hope we don't lose sight of kind of the less sexy things too, all with an eye that support these larger projects. So, thanks.
Thank you. Moving right ahead, Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. In the next couple of years of this term, one of the things that I hope to revisit is a, is a piece of work that I'm particularly proud of that I worked on in the last term, and that is the Affordable Living Committee. And our report that was generated not by consultants, but by community experts, people who know this city, who know the struggles that low-income folks are having in this city. The costs of living are getting higher and higher, rents are getting higher and higher. All costs that we need to, to support ourselves and our families and live are getting, getting more expensive. But wages in this community remain relatively flat. And so one of the things that I hope to, to look toward in terms of recovery from this really terrible year are everybody, all hands on deck. And somebody, something that I haven't thought about lately or haven't heard much about is the, the issue of CDFIs and where is that? And what is their focus with respect to that, that, you know, elevating job opportunities, employment opportunities? And not just solely in, in specific sectors that we know are, are, are good things to try to attract in the city, but all kinds of employment opportunities that fit all kinds of skill sets and all kinds of people that make up this wonderful community. So I'd like to know a little bit more about what CDFI is doing, you know, partnering. Obviously, we have our wonderful partners in the business community through BEDC and the Chamber. But we do need all hands on deck with all private sector and nonprofit sector and the public sector in improving opportunities for people to make living wages. So I really do want to revisit that report. It needs some updating, but it's got solid foundation to it. The report is called, you know, Working Harder, Falling Behind. And that seems to be the nature even before the pandemic hit. And so there needs to be a lot more work there. So in addition to hearing, you know, more of the hand update on where we are with that Housing Development Fund and how best that can be applied moving forward with those public subsidies that are so critical to getting us to the affordability that we, that we all need, we all want. I want to know a little bit more about what, what the business community, what the private sector can help us do with respect to, you know, helping people get back on their feet and, and having jobs where they can support themselves with. So that's just another thought going forward. Thanks.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg, thank you. It's music to my ears. I didn't respond directly to your first point, but we would love to give a direct report as we do annually, but happy to do it sooner about the Housing Development Fund, the several million dollars that have come into and are going out of that fund, projections of what's coming in and how it's been helpful to create many, many affordable units. And then absolutely would love to give a more direct report too about the CD5 Friendly Bloomington, which has leveraged to more than $20 million of CD5 money into the community. Mostly housing, but some on the employment side too. That tends to be a little trickier and harder, but would love to talk about that. It's music to my ears and thanks for your interest in that.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, just went with a question the first time in terms of comments and thoughts on some of what I've heard and what, what we could perhaps invest this money in. I really like Councilmember Sims' point that I like the idea of seeding things or also one-time expenditures that don't require a lot of ongoing operational maintenance necessarily that pay, you know, other types of dividends for the city. So I think that's a good approach. I think obviously, you know, revenue replacement and recovering from, from lost revenues, that makes a lot of sense and we need to do that. But beyond that, certainly housing and security, I think, is a, is a big focus and something we need to be working on. And in particular, thinking about what's most impactful and where the biggest gaps are that would need filling. Some of that is being discussed by the Housing and Security Group and some of it's almost definitely in the very low-income housing area, $0 to $400 a month or lower.
Mr. Flaherty, you've gone silent. We didn't hear anything you just said after $400 a month or lower.
Just hang on. The chair is trying to get his attention. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Am I back?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
My apologies. Sometimes if I have too many tabs open, my, my audio freaks out. Yeah, just mentioning on the housing and security front that, you know, the very low-income housing in particular is, is much needed. And that there might be unique opportunities with, that kind of fit into that seed funding or startup funding role in that category. And in particular, piggybacking on Councilmember Volan's comments about tiny homes, this is increasingly something that's being used to help as a more immediate solution that would qualify as, as housing first to get unhoused folks back into some stability. The city of Portland is considering legislation right now, for instance, that would allow tiny home villages everywhere that apartments are allowed, as well as various funding mechanisms. A lot of progressive cities already have tiny home villages for, for, available for folks who, who may fall into homelessness. But they usually exist in a sort of legal gray area and obviously they would require some sort of fairly significant startup funding, but could be rented, just like any other housing, but are, but could be built in a, in a way that is, meets that very low-income housing need. So that's, I know where we have a big gap. I actually was thinking about access to basic facilities and restrooms too. I know we have a public restroom that will be open and accompanied with the Fourth Street Garage, but I'm wondering about a winterized public restroom in at least one of our parks. My understanding, I believe, is that all of our parks' restrooms are seasonal only. And obviously we have folks who, you know, are outdoors and living outdoors year-round at different times and having availability of public facilities would, would certainly benefit them. But really, everybody, obviously parks users as well. So an idea I wanted to put out there. I think the community land trust idea is a good one as well. I'm not sure if purchasing a lot of land is necessarily needed. We, of course, have a fair amount of land, whether it's at the hospital site for redevelopment in the very near future. And this may be a less popular idea, but it crosses my mind. The convention center footprint, greater campus footprint, I, I think that's a project that we'll be probably discussing eventually again. And I think it needs some, some very critical thinking in a, in a kind of changing and evolving world. It's a pretty carbon-intensive industry. Our economy is already really reliant on tourism. I'm not sure if, you know, doubling down makes sense and expanding in the way that we initially thought makes a lot of sense. And I mentioned that's in the context of the availability of that land in a prime location for, for community land trust housing purposes, where we could ideally have, you know, affordable owned owner occupied units. Let's see, a few other things on the economic recovery front, like a number of my colleagues thinking in particular about some of the sectors that have been hit the hardest and in particularly those with a public benefit kind of component. The arts most certainly fall into that category. And I think there's probably some, some needs there still. I know we've already done some Recover Forward funding and other things, but it sounds like there may be some other opportunities with, with things like the Waldron Center for the Arts. Maybe the Bus Church from the Theater has needs as well. Finally, on the infrastructure front, I think the transportation plan we should take a look at. I know we've not been quite as quick out the gate on, on implementing some of the things in that plan as it called for. In particular, the high priority bicycle network, I believe, and also the beginning to think about the process of, of turning some of our major corridors, north, south, east, west corridors, Walnut College, Third Street into complete streets and, and starting the corridor studies and plant, planning that will go into transforming those corridors in a way that, that really should drive quite a bit of economic development. So thinking about that. And finally, yes, the, the Climate Action Plan as well that we've just accepted and, and maybe trying to accelerate and get moving on some of those actions. So I will leave it at that. And if there's any response or anything, that's fine. But we can also follow up in the weeks to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Volan?
First, I wanted to ask a question of Councilmember Smith, his idea for, I wanted a clarification. When you said that $20 million could help 2,000 people, that's about $10,000 a person. Is that a down payment program or what is, what did you have in mind?
I, I thought of it as a down, some kind of down payment program. And I just spitballed that $10,000 may help people get into a home. Maybe it needs to be adjusted, maybe it needs 15,000, but something like that would just be such an impact on so many people.
Okay, that clarifies it. I wasn't at first sure what you, you know, what you had in mind for what that would do, but thank you for that clarification. I want to say that, I wanted to echo some of the things that Councilmember Rosenbarger said about transit-related investments. I don't have any illusions that this money is the kind of money that should be used to fund something that requires operating dollars. But if there's anything we can do to build infrastructure, you know, one-time payments, one-time investments, in particular, I want to echo the idea of, of, call it a parking shuttle, call it a downtown shuttle, but going between the garages, between the hospital, center of town, sample gates and city hall is an idea whose time has come. We could build on that core shuttle route to, I mean, it would make the whole downtown more accessible and might also sort of reduce the demand for driving short distances in town. So I really like that idea. And if we were to purchase the buses for it, you know, that would be a good thing. Speaking of leveraging money, maybe this is the money that will finally allow us to raise the 10th Street underpass that would allow Bloomington Transit to purchase all electric vehicles. Like we can't do it now because that underpass, that single underpass directly impacts Transit's ability to buy buses that are taller. If we can use some of our money to help leverage its, its raising, that would, that would provide tremendous carbon benefits because we could, we could convert our buses to non-diesel, you know? But we can't do it until that underpass is, is changed or until Law Lane on the north side of the tracks is built and the bus can be rerouted. Either way, I don't care. As long as we can solve the problem of that bottleneck, we can have an immediate carbon impact on the whole city with that one change. I don't know how we go about financing it. I just know that, you know, if those dollars can be used as earnest money towards a bond to finally do that, let's do it. So those are some of my thoughts. But, you know, transit is a close second in my mind to the housing ideas that I've talked about in my first round, in particular, as Councilman Flaherty said, the very, very low-income housing, $0 to $400. We have got to have a permanent solution for, you know, people who need something that to step up from a tent. It will, it will get plenty of use, even though it's, 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 let's call it semi-permanent housing. We need some semi-permanent housing in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, you have anything else?
I, I'd like to follow up a little bit. Yes, thank you, President Sims. I'd like to follow up a little bit on Mr. Volan. Yeah, the $0 to $400, when I met with the shelters, the homeless shelters a month or so ago, and I asked them what the most important thing that the city might be able to provide, they stated that somehow the housing from $0 to $400 a month was critical in alleviating the homeless problem. So, you know, with the $20 million, it would seem like we could really, the tiny homes is a great idea. I've seen those in other communities. I don't, I think that we could do that. And I'd be really, really supportive of that, taking that, the bulk of that money and using it to alleviate some of these issues. One thing I want to point out is that I believe the Biden administration has an infrastructure bill around a trillion dollars that they're still working on. So I, I guess I'd say keep our powder to dry for big infrastructure expenditures out of that 20 million or 22 that we're getting now, because I believe there's going to be a, another round of funds directed towards infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger, you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I was going to ask on that. I, I think, can you clear that up? I mean, are we getting different funds for infrastructure and is that the, is that the funds that are, that need to be earmarked for sewer and that can't be like bike pad transit? I thought that was different.
I can comment just briefly and, and if Corporation Council Guthrie or Controller Underwood or anybody else wants to clarify, we're, you know, we're still trying to figure it out. Again, we still don't have really much in terms of guidance for the 22.3 million that we expect from the rescue plan. My hope is it will be quite flexible and I expect it will be quite flexible, including allowance for certain kinds of, a lot of infrastructure, frankly. But the, it is absolutely true too. There's a big, big public infrastructure bill that the president has outlined. It's actually, I think, close to $3 trillion, but it hasn't gone through Congress. It needs to go through Congress and could change a lot. Our own lot. Our own former mayor Pete is involved in that, you know, from South Bend, Indiana's Mayor Pete Buttigieg now at Transportation, and many others. And I do think, Councilmember Rosenbarger, it's absolutely true, we ought to be keeping our eye on what might be coming down the pike in that bill. I know the president has said he wants it by summer, July 4th-ish. You don't always get what you want, but that would help us identify other opportunities for transit, for public infrastructure built environment, like side paths and sidewalks and streets and utilities, other, other things like that. It's, it's just really uncertain right now. And I don't know if, if Ms. Guthrie or Mr. Underwood wants to add anything, they're certainly welcome to.
I don't have much to add, except that everyone in the country is waiting for treasury regulations, guidance, whatever we can get. And there are a lot of different tranches of funding that are targeted, and it's really hard to tell sometimes how they're, how they're going to be distributed and what options there will be for local governments. But we're keeping an eye on it, and we will just let you know as soon as we figure it out.
Okay, thank you. I want to thank the mayor for initiating this conversation this evening. There will be many, many more, I'm sure. We will be looking at some appropriation ordinances, I do believe, in the not-too-distant future that will generate more discussion. Each member, we've had two rounds of comments, ideas, a few questions. And to end this evening, Mayor Hamilton, I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you have any final comments before we end this meeting.
I'm starting with two ears and one mouth, so I don't want to say much. It's, it's very helpful to hear this, helpful for us to hear your priorities. As you know, we'll be needing to try to assemble a proposal. We look forward to more talk about it. I, I agree with a great deal of what was said. I don't want to start picking out this or that idea. You know, to the extent that you can start to help us identify relative weights among the buckets, and we've heard that from some of you, if, if you don't feel that's the right way to approach it, that's fine. But what will, as, Mr. President, as I said, what, what we're kind of thinking of is, again, we, we want to wait to get the regulations. We got to wait to see those specifics. But thinking about what can we do in the remainder of this year, and try to bring that to you in the, you know, hopefully before your recess in June, to say, well, do we know there are some things we should start right away this year? We'll be trying to think about that, kind of what can come out of the gate most quickly, and most importantly, to get going quickly. Some of that may be restoring funding, you know, making sure we have replacement funding set aside. Then I do think, looking forward for the 2022 budget, you should expect, kind of like we did with Recover Forward, we'll probably identify some America Rescue Plan ideas and pieces in the budget that, that we might bring forward to you. So I know we're going to have a budget advance, which, which often was this meeting, but the budget advance is structured a little different this year. But please continue to feed us these ideas and reactions, and we'll have a back and forth process on this. There are nine of you, and 22.3 million one way is each of you could get 2.6 million. I don't know what the math is, you know, and, and, but, but I think we all expect that there'll be a, a real iterative process to identify the biggest impact we can make. So we look forward to that. Thanks.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor Hamilton. And I also want to thank my colleagues for joining this evening, city staff, we have clerk staff, we have council staff. And last, but certainly not least, some members of the public who decided to join us this evening. I look forward to more opportunities to have further conversation on investing robustly and boldly as we move forward. Unless there's any objections, I would like to adjourn this meeting this evening. And seeing none, everyone have a great evening. We'll see you all tomorrow. Thank you.